Welcome to the third quarter 2021 Market Update Town Hall Meeting hosted by United Church Funds. My name is Matt Wagner. I have the honor of serving as the Vice President of Institutional Relationships at United Church Funds and as I survey the attendee list, I see many familiar names that I would like to welcome back to this, to these town halls. And I see some new names and I want to welcome you all to this opportunity to learn about our portfolio and hopefully learn a little bit about what we're doing on your behalf to make the world a better place through sustainable investing. As we look to the agenda, I'm going to be joined by several of my valued colleagues. Stacy Pettis, who's our Institutional Relationships Executive, will take you through some organizational updates. Our Director of Responsible Investing, Matthew Illian, will talk about our efforts around sustainable and responsible investing. He'll also have a special guest that will be introduced a little later. And then we're going to be joined by our UCF Investments Team, Dave Clausen, Lon Kai and Manoti Donaraj will be joining us to talk about market trends and how we're positioning the portfolio on your behalf. Lastly, we'll be doing some Q and A with all of you. We encourage you to submit your questions in the Q and A button, which you'll find at the bottom of your screen. And we'll try to do our best to answer as many of those as we can, either during the presentation or at the end. Again, thank you for being here. Your presence here means that you're committed to fiduciary responsibility and committed to helping your church be good stewards of the assets of which you have been entrusted and we're grateful for you to be here. We're going to start out with a poll question. And as we do that, I want to thank two of our back office team, our marketing and communications team for running tonight's call. Debbie Weebo and Adam Sang do a terrific job on our behalf. And I want to thank them both for what they're doing, although you can't see them on screen, they are instrumental to the success of these town halls. So here we have a couple of poll questions. Number one, how many UCF Town Hall meetings have you attended before this one? It's multiple choice. We'll give you a few minutes. And as we're doing this, it's hard to believe this is five for us. We started these, I think the first one that we did was in April of 2020. While the market was going through a bit of shock due to coronavirus and so we wanted to create this channel of communication for our clients and for us to be able to communicate with you all as related to our strategy and we're certainly appreciative for many of you that have attended multiple ones. All right. Well, it looks like about 20% of the crowd is your first Town Hall with us, so we want to say welcome. And for many of you have been to multiple, are veterans of the Town Halls, we want to welcome you back. All right, if we could move to the next slide. I want to just take a moment and introduce the rest of our staff at United Church Funds as well as then on the next page, our board members. You'll see that we have several teams at United Church Funds. Our Institutional Relationships and Marketing and Communications Team, Debbie, Adam, and then Stacy, of course, which you'll hear from in just a moment. Our Client Services Team are probably very familiar voices. If you send an email to info@ucfunds.org, these are the good folks that that will respond to all of your requests. Millie, Krista and Gaylord do a fantastic job for our organization in the field of client services. Behind the scenes, our Finance and Administration Team, led by Karen Sherman Chang is our Director of Finance and Administration. And as well, Deborah Cho and Michelle Hamilton really do a fantastic job in our back office Finance and Accounting. In fact, they are working hard right now in the middle of a SOC 1 audit for our organization. Want to thank them for their help. And then lastly, we'll hear later from our Investment Team, Dave Clausen, Lon Kai and Manoti Donaraj. On the next page, you'll see our Board. Our Board of Directors are made up of United Church of Christ members from all over the country who volunteer their time to help guide our organization and strategically lead us through organizational growth. I want to thank several of them that I see on the call today for their service to our organization and to the broader church. Part of our Board of Directors is our Investment Committee. You can see them listed on the right. And I would encourage you to go to our website to learn more about all of these good folks who again volunteer their time to help steward the $1.1 billion in assets that United Church Funds has been entrusted to manage. Next slide. With this, I want to introduce my good friend and colleague, Stacy Pettis. Stacy, take it away.
Thank you so much, Matt, and thank you all for being here. Again, for those of you who are joining us again and welcome to those attending for the first time. Many of you are very familiar with our organization, but we like to highlight some of our different, our differentiators as a nonprofit investment management organization. Our responsible investment options align portfolios to progressive Christian values. Environmental, social and governance issues are a top priority for United Church Funds. And in this particular Town Hall, we will highlight some of the tremendous work that's being done on your behalf. But before we jump into that, I'm excited to share some of our organizational updates for the third quarter. Awesome. In August of this year, UCF as well as the Pension Boards co-hosted a climate symposium. Attendees were able to get a historic look back and a forward-looking vision for how investments support climate justice. We wanted to be sure that you all could reference this material in the recording and so we've made the link available to you through this presentation as well as through our website. In October of this year as well, our Board of Directors just recently met and voted to lower fees by one basis point for 2022. Many of you may recall that expense ratios were reduced in 2021 by either five or six basis points, depending on which fund you are invested in. This reduction in expense ratios means more is for your mission and ministry and we're excited to be able to lower fees yet another year. As we approach the end of the year, charitable donations tend to increase tremendously and donors may be looking for opportunities to donate to your church or your organization in a different way this year. And we're pleased to inform you that we have initiated a custodial relationship with Coinbase. And so this will allow UCF to accept various cryptocurrencies by donors. So this could be any donor, this could be an individual who wants to give in this way and we are happy to facilitate that for you. If you have any questions on this process, feel free to contact us and we will walk you through what is needed. Also, the Richard and Helen Brown Endowment was founded in the 90s with a gift, a generous gift of $5 million. And UCF has the privilege of awarding annual grants and scholarships for this endowment each year. We're pleased to announce that in 2021, $219,000 was awarded across 18 applicants. That's something we're really grateful to have the opportunity to do and give back in that way. And at the last Town Hall, we announced that we were going to be eliminating two of our balance fund options, the conservative and the aggressive balance fund. We've been reaching out to you for the past couple of months. For those of you that are invested in the conservative and aggressive balance fund, if you're invested in other funds, you haven't been getting this notification. But for those of you that are in conservative and aggressive, we've been looking to educate you on what your options are moving forward. So I want to flip to the next slide to just give you a visual of what what our fund lineup will look like. If you were in the aggressive or the conservative balance fund, your your options are, if we move to the next slide, your options are to either one step into our UCF Balance Fund, which is just been renamed from the Moderate Balance Fund, which has a 60% target to equity and a 40% target to fixed income. You also have option two, which is to invest in our UCF Balance Fund and then to add on either total equity or fixed income in certain percentages to get you to whatever your initial allocation was, either in the aggressive or the conservative balance fund. And then option three is you can invest directly in total equity and/or fixed income at whatever ratios meet the needs of your committee. This is outlined in the emails that we've been sending. It's also in the Google Link form that you received a link to and you are also welcome to have a direct conversation with myself or Matthew Wagner. We have been speaking to many of you and we know some of you have been calling and we intend to give you a call back to really walk you through this process. So with that, I have the pleasure, I believe, of introducing our Director of Responsible Investing and he has some amazing information to share with you. Matthew Illian, take it away.
Thank you, Stacy. And since many of you are new or for the first time joining us, I want to say greetings to you as well. I've been here for just over a year and it's been a great, a great organization, happy to serve you. And hopefully we get to connect in person one day. But on the, I have a few updates. So the first is some exciting updates that we're seeing related to racial equity in the corporate boardroom. You'll see on this slide a few kind of interesting, exciting facts. So in this past year, this, this kind of research review showed that 33% of new corporate directors were black and this is up from 11% the prior year. Even more comprehensively, 72% of all new corporate directors come from historically underrepresented groups and this compares to 59% the year prior. And then if we look cumulatively across the S and P 500, now 30% of all directors are women, which, which was an exciting milestone. And, and you know, we will say that in the Fortune 500, S and P 500 companies, we're seeing more movement more rapidly. But even, even these trends, we're starting to see push down into the small and micro cap companies as well, who all understand that you know, we're in a, we're in an age where every company needs to do their part and there's an expectation that they'll lean into this moment. So the last, so if you go back, sorry, the last data point is that 60% of boards now disclose their ethnic and racial composition. And this is important. This is actually work that we're doing. We're asking boards and companies to disclose not just their board composition, but also their, their staff composition so that we can understand how they're doing in hiring, in retention and promotion. And, and I guess what I wanted to say here is that when, when you entrust your assets with UCF, you're helping us leverage our votes that we make and also our voice as we engage with companies and asking them to do, you know, do their part in this work. So next slide. There's also some exciting updates on a regulatory front. So we're seeing a real sea change in terms of the SEC and the Department of Labor in supporting authentic, sustainable investing. So this first note is that they are now looking into funds, whether they are authentically sustainable and ESG, environmental, social governance, kind of addressing those factors. Or are they just putting a label on their funds? And you know, that's been called greenwashing. So the SEC is now looking into funds and they've actually launched their first investigation at a major European group called DWS focused on whether their funds are actually meeting the branding that they're using. And so we're really happy to see that, you know, the, the market is starting to shake out now. Obviously there's a lot of focus and attention on sustainable investing. And our desire and hope is to see that it is authentic. It's a little bit like the organic movement. I mean, it started out, everyone wanted to be organic. And you know, there was maybe a season there where it didn't mean much and they started to create rules and regulations around what it meant to be organic. So that's what we're starting to see in the sustainable investing world. We're also seeing the SEC share with companies that they are guidance on how to disclose their, their climate risks, particularly related to climate change and also to human capital supply management. So historically, if you go back to the 60s, maybe 10% of a company's value was intangibles. 90% was in plants, property, equipment. Fast forward today, 90% of a corporate value is intangible, only 10% is PPE. And so what we're seeing is the SEC is essentially saying that these companies need to do a better job at disclosing these social environmental factors that, that fall down to the bottom line. And so you'll expect to see more of this, more guidance for companies that, that are now asking for these ESG disclosures. The last regulatory update comes from the Department of Labor and focused on retirement plans. I know we are not a retirement plan provider, but it's worth noting because the 401K market and the pension and defined benefit plan market are so huge that what happens there impacts all of the financial markets. And so what we're seeing is the Department of Labor is now saying these plans are allowed to have sustainable funds in their plans without having to worry about a breach of fiduciary duty. In fact, it's an enhancement of their fiduciary duty to consider these sustainable factors. So that's a big change from the last administration and we're really excited to see it. We'll go to the next slide. I have more, more exciting updates. Right now, many of you know that the United Nations Climate Change Conference is going on, COP 26 in Glasgow. And so a lot of the financial actors, us included, are very much interested watching to see what commitments countries are going to make. And leading up to this, a lot of financial companies are also making their own commitments. So for example, just last month, we saw Harvard University take another step to commit to fossil fuel divestment. They said they're even going to divest from their private equity. So the entire portfolio would be fossil fuel free. We've seen this also in the largest European pension plan. And one of the largest asset managers, act advisors out of France, almost a trillion dollar business, committing to fossil fuel free investing. So we're, we're excited to see this. The trend is just building. But we're also excited to say that in 2013, the United Church of Christ became the first religious denomination to adopt a platform of divestment from fossil fuels. And then one year later, we were able to follow up and launch the Beyond Fossil Fuels Funds. At that time, it was $20 million committed from 10 founding investors. And if you fast forward to today, that fund, those funds now have 150 million in total investments and over 100 clients are invested. And so what we've been able to do is enable any church, any organization who desires to be fossil fuel free in their investing. And on top of that, the returns have been very strong and we can get into that more later, but you can see the five-year returns listed here. And what we want to say also is that we're not done. In fact, what started as a focus on oil and gas reserves, we now know, and we now have the data that will help us take this to the next level and start to look at all the sectors in a portfolio, including utilities, including transportation and look at their carbon footprint and how they are moving to a low carbon economy. And so you should expect to hear from us in the coming months, evolutions as we, as we further develop these beyond fossil fuel funds. So that's exciting. We wanted to share that with you. If you'll go to the next slide. We also want to share some updates on our collaborative partners. The two that are probably the most very, very important, if not the most important to us. One is ICCR and you've heard a lot about them in our prior webinars. We are a founding partner of ICCR going back 50 years. In 2021, we saw a 100% jump in majority votes for the member-supported resolutions. These are shareholder resolutions often focused on environmental and social factors. So there was a big jump this past year. You can see the average support went up from 28% to 32% this past year. And for comparison's sake, you know, back when, when this movement of focusing on environmental and social factors, this faith or values-based investing got started, you would often see, you know, results like 3% or 5%. That was, that was something to celebrate. So today, we're, we're at a whole different place. We're starting to see these values-based, faith-based shareholder resolutions that are getting majority supports and companies are now having to respond. Perhaps even more importantly, ICCR saw 113 resolutions withdrawn for agreement. So this, these are cases where a company commits to make changes before having to even threaten to go to a shareholder resolution. So very exciting data there. And then also at a Climate Action 100, this is 615 of the world's largest investors representing $55 trillion in assets, engaging with 167 companies that are the world's largest carbon emitters. So this, they represent 80% of global industrial emissions. Today, 52% of those companies, those, those focus companies have committed to net zero by 2050 initiatives. Obviously, the goal in this collaboration is to see 100% of those committed and that they would commit themselves to third-party review, science-based targets. And I, we wanted to share that that, you know, 52% is a great number and we want to see it go higher. The last collaboration that I want to share with you, and, and this leads to a video interview that we want to share is with Anita Dorrett. She is the Program Director for the Investor Alliance for Human Rights. And for context, this, this is an initiative that has really been born out of ICCR. It was begun in 2018 and the, and they have a substantial coalition themselves. So they have 200-plus investors, $6 trillion in assets, representing 18 different countries. And they engage with companies that work in high-risk and conflict-affected territories. So these are multinational companies. So think you'll hear more about the Uyghur region in Xinjiang, China, Myanmar, Palestine, other regions. And Anita is an incredible leader of this effort and she has her master's from Columbia, in law from Columbia University. She served for 25 years as Corporate Counsel in Corporate America and now leads an effort in this collaboration that holds these corporations accountable. Anita is a delightful, smart, wonderful person to work with and we were launching into some heavy topics. So I wanted to start out with a light question that kind of goes back to my own childhood. So with that, Adam, if you'll start this, this interview, let's hear from Anita.
This is the Investor Alliance for Human Rights. As a childhood, a child of the Star Wars generation, that makes me think that the alliance is on the good side and that we're fighting against the empire. Is that a correct assumption?
We're fighting for every person's entitlement to live a life of dignity and equality. That's what we're fighting for.
In the work that you're doing in the, in China, in the Xinjiang Uyghur region, how, how has the voices of the people who are being impacted influenced the way you approach the work and why? How, how do you believe they are helping shape this work versus maybe just the headlines that we hear about what's happening?
So on the Uyghur work, we've really been working very closely with Uyghur human rights groups who have, who are also working with victims and they have families who've been impacted by the actions and the repression in China. And so by that work, we're really enabled to bring the voices of the people on the ground to the table. They don't have a seat at the table. Investors have a seat at the table. So by doing that, we are creating that ability for us to give voice to the voiceless in that particular scenario and as well ensuring that any kind of action taken by the company is aligned with what the impacted people want or see needed in that scenario.
Talk to us as investors as why, why the solar industry is particularly important.
No, that's, that's great. And thank you, Matt, Matthew and UCF. You're taking the lead on one of the engagements with the solar company as well. The, the issue that we talk about is really the issue of just transition. So as, as governments and, and you know, investors and businesses around the world want to address issues of climate change, we're looking at the transition from fossil fuels to renewable energy. So you know, everybody wants that to happen. But we want to ensure that that is done, that transition is done in a just way. And what we're seeing, and this particularly comes out from the work that you're already involved in, in the Xinjiang Uyghur Autonomous Region. What we have found out through research that has come into play is that the solar sector, the manufacture of the panels and the raw materials that go into making these solar panels are actually sourced from the Xinjiang Uyghur Autonomous Region. And hence, the repression that is ongoing there, the use of forced labor through the detention of people by the Chinese government goes into the making of those solar panels. We're working with investors to engage with their portfolio of solar companies in the US, in Europe, who are buying from these tainted supply chains to say, you need to have a conversation on this. You need to change these practices and where you're not able to change these practices, you need to disengage from them.
So Anita, on, on the web, on your website, at the Alliance for Human Rights, there's a blog post and it reads, "Global Brands Must Comply With International Human Rights Law." So tell us, what do you mean by that? What, what are you, what are you saying that global brands must comply with international human law? What does that mean to a lay investor? Talk about that for a bit with us.
One of the things that we're pushing with global brands is to say that, you know, you're now a global company. You're operating in markets around the world. You can't just decide to operate in a particular market based on the national laws of that country, which might be less onerous or less rights-respecting than maybe even the laws in your own country that you came from, you know. So, so, so there's a disparity between national laws and we don't want companies to be able to play that and work on the lowest common denominator. So you want to use internationally recognized standards. So if you're, you know, whether I guess you're a global company or not, but you know, primarily with global companies, you want them to really be looking at global standards. International human rights law is that standard. International human rights laws give humans, people the right and that's the right that we want to champion for.
I want to thank you so much for spending time with us and sharing your important work with our audience today. Thank you.
So thank you all for, for listening in on that and for this update on responsible investing. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to my colleague, Matt Wagner. I believe he has another poll question.
Matthew, thanks. Hearing from Anita was inspiring and hearing about all of the progress that we are making to make the world, hopefully to make the world a better place. And hearing how we are putting our voice and our dollars to work in that effort on behalf of all of our clients is remarkable. Thank you very much for that, for that update. We do have another poll question. I'll ask Debbie to hit the button on the polls. What tools or resources does your church or faith-based organization need most to thrive post-pandemic? So multiple choice, we can review endowment policies, investment objectives, learning more about responsible investing and how that works. Resources for budgeting and financial planning, fundraising ideas and best practices, plan giving resources and training materials for new committee members or finance committee. Go ahead and give this a few minutes. And of course, this question, the reason we're asking this is that we want to make sure that we're doing our best to provide you with the resources that you need to be successful. And to make sure that, that, that we're doing all we can to put the right tools in your hands. So your responses to these poll questions are important to us in, in, in helping to frame the ways that we can serve you as a client. Excellent. Looks like we have some, uh, looks like we have some across-the-board answers, which is great. And we'll study this and hopefully be able to put, again, put those resources into your hands and we appreciate. And we'll study this and hopefully be able to put again, put those resources into your hands and we appreciate your appreciate your participation in the poll. Adam, if you could flip the next slide. So we're going to switch gears. We have two, we have a double bottom lining United Church Funds, sustainable investing and making progress there as well as generating competitive returns. In what can be a challenging market environment. And so we're going to talk a little bit about investment returns and our market strategy. I want to introduce my colleague from the investment team, Dave Clausen. I also want to introduce Lon Kai and Manoti Danarash. All three are with us tonight, I believe. And as we sort of set the table here for a handful of questions for Dave and his team. I want to just run through a couple of slides here. So three bullets on our themes that will frame the next, the next section. We will take a quick look back at Q3 and some historical performance. And then we're going to switch gears and really take a forward looking approach to some of the issues that we see impact potentially impacting the portfolio on a go for basis. Obviously, a continuation of the economic growth, but also maybe some of the challenges that we have in front of us. And so we certainly thank Dave, Lon and Manoti for being with us to answer these. Adam, if you could switch the slide. Thanks. Lots of numbers on this slide and certainly a lot to unpack here. In the interest of time and in the interest of wanting to to hear from my colleagues, the next couple of slides, we're going to glide through. Suffice it to say that Q3, when we look back on the quarter, a little tougher than the first half of the year to generate a return either in equities or in fixed income. The S and P 500 was just slightly positive, but international stocks as well as small cap stocks gave back gains, particularly in September and ended the quarter negative. If we take a longer look on the chart on the left, if we take a longer look at returns, clearly mid double digit returns across across globally diversified portfolios over three, five and 10 year time horizons. And for fixed income, generally mid to low single digit returns. Clearly, equities were in favor over the last 10 years. And as we look forward, you know, certainly our return expectations reflect that. But certainly a robust return environment over the last five and 10 years for sure. Next slide, Adam. Again, there's two slides here and just want to slightly unpack these and turn you to our website at ucfunds.org to learn more. Here you'll see all of the fund returns for our managed funds as of September 30. I would just note that domestic equity, when we look at a little bit of a longer term trend, three, five and 10 years. Domestic core equity, large cap US equity led our absolute returns followed by small cap equity, international equity, alternatives, and lastly, fixed income. And as we switch the page and look at our balanced funds, you'll find that most, most of our clients have broadly diversified portfolios. And if you look at the last three and five years, a moderate, the moderate balance fund, which is our most used balance fund over the last three years generated a return of about nine and a quarter percent per year over three years. And over the last decade, on average per year, a little north of 8% per year. So as we switch the, switch the slide to the next page. I want to bring in my colleague Stacy Pettis and she's got a question for Dave and the team. Stacy. Stacy, I believe you might be on mute.
Thanks so much.
There you go.
You can hear me now.
Good thing I know the question in advance, Stacy.
Right. Thank you so much. And either of you could take this question. As we look at at the charts that are that are on this slide, it appears that the maximum impacts of fiscal policies, governmental programs and stimulus that help to support the economy during COVID may be behind us. As we look ahead, what are some of the primary economic metrics you are watching closely to gauge if the economy is continuing to improve?
Well, good question. You've got the two of us and welcome everyone. And you've got Manoti just off of a COVID booster. Glad to see her. Really great question about what we're looking at to see if the economy is continuing to improve. And I offer up that there's so much data to look at. You know, we've, we've found particularly with, you know, with AI, artificial intelligence, that the amount of data is is almost, you know, overwhelming. But some of the things that we really look at are the surveys that are done by a number of the firms to gauge whether or not things are, things are improving, you know, things like, you know, trucking surveys, state tax receipts, bank loans, you know, that are really trying to really anticipate where the economy is going. I think the best one is the Purchasing Managers Index where there's a monthly survey of purchasing managers around the globe at companies to indicate whether or not things are improving. But I guess at the end of the day, a really key is the ways in which companies are delivering earnings. Because generally earnings drive stock prices. And we've gleaned a lot of information about the ability of companies to navigate the this this environment, particularly with costs rising and the ability to generate pricing increases, which I think will lead into a little bit of discussion on on inflation. But since the end of the third quarter, because earnings have been fairly robust. And because the outlook has been as laid out, has generally been good. Markets have again resumed their ascent, particularly equity markets.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Dave. I've got the next question here for you. As we look at this chart here on US and the Consumer Price Index, we're certainly hearing a lot about inflation in the news, supply chain issues. And, you know, sort of feeling that inflation, if you will, hit the local consumers feeling that in the wallet and higher retail prices, gas prices, et cetera. Continues to be a little unclear as to whether this is transitory or whether it's more structural when we're referring to this inflation. So is UCF positioning our portfolio differently? To protect or take advantage of inflation? What are some market sectors or strategies that might perform better in an inflationary environment?
Well, I, I will answer your question, but one of the surprising factors is in the face of increasing inflation. Interest rates continue to come down. So it's a, it's a, it's a bit of a head scratcher. Think we generally divide the world up and Manoti does this too. And when talking to managers and trying to ferret out how it is that they're reacting to the environment is the world, you know, for the purposes of this discussion can be divided up into goods inflation, which is really the supply chain. Which has really been impeded by, by, by COVID and in some, some ways, some ways, the availability of workers, but but primarily the, the lack of availability of 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 goods like lumber, aluminum, et cetera. Also impeded by difficulty at the ports. And I think we think that 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 part of the inflate inflation will be transitory, that there will be supply to meet demand. And the Federal Reserve can be comforted somewhat by the transitory nature of goods inflation. On the services side, where we're talking about sectors of the economy such as hospitality, restaurants. There is a, and and retail, there is really an issue of the unavailable availability of workers, shortage of workers in almost every, every sector. And we believe that the the trend toward higher wages, despite globalization trends, you know, is stickier and will be in place for some, some time now. The answer to your question about how have we reacted to this? I think you know that in most of the balanced funds, we've been overweighted to equities in general and underweighted to fixed income. In fact, we have some cash around. To, yeah, and a good, good point from Mel, that the reason interest rates are staying low is because of the massive purchase of of securities by the Federal Reserve and the, and the massive support, which doesn't look like it's going to go away, you know, any, anytime soon. But I would offer up, you know, equities at least have the ability to pass on higher costs and some are doing so. And within equities, you've got a number of the more cyclical or value strategies, which generally have done at least as well as some of the technology and growth, you know, names. And so we're sticking with some of those managers in in the, in the, in the value or cyclical area benefiting from a, from a better global economic, you know, environment.
Sure. Thanks, Dave. Stacy?
All right. Yeah. So I just wanted to first provide a little bit of context around what we're looking at. So in looking at the, the chart on the right of global valuations, we see that there's 25 year valuation range of markets in US, Japan, Europe, China and emerging markets. The purple line across each bar represents the 25 year average of the price to earnings ratio, which is commonly used to evaluate relative value of stocks. The blue diamond on each bar shows that the US markets are valued well above their 25 year average. While international markets are more in line on par with their average. How does relative valuation play a part, particularly in the UCF balance fund or what's known as the moderate balance fund in allocation? And can you share a bit about how important diversification and active management is during these times?
Well, maybe I'll let Manoti address the idea of of active management. But as Matt Wagner indicated, and you've seen on the slides, and you all know, we've had really 10 years of an up, up market with some, with some interruption. And as you all know as well, over that timeframe, US stocks have generally been more expensive than the rest of the world and it's continued. And and this year almost, you know, incredibly, we've got a 20% percentage point gap between the performance of the S and P and emerging markets, at least through the third quarter. So I would answer the question in in a little bit of a silly way, but values, valuation only matters really in the, in the, in the long run. And and only if companies in those regions can generate the earnings necessary to support the stock prices. Over the, over the short term, or, you know, earnings matter and it hasn't really mattered that the US is a bit more expensive because companies are generally well managed and they've been delivering, you know, at the same time. However, I, we do on the, on the team and an organization adhere to the notion that diversification is the only of free lunch. So you can stem and lower volatility through a diversified approach. In many cases, and and Manoti helps lead the manager research, we're relying on active management within those markets to pick stocks in order to be, to to exceed, exceed benchmarks. And let me give you, you know, one example. Stacy and I were talking to the New York Conference today and they're invested in the Beyond Fossil Fuels Balance Fund. Well, the, that manager on the equity portion of things is overweight to emerging markets, which has been the poorest performing region of the, of the country. However, within that 13.7% that they, that they have in emerging markets, they've done a really good job of avoiding Chinese telecommunications and technology, you know, companies this year. And really locating companies even within those markets that are still generating, you know, positive returns. So I put all of those things together to indicate that at this point, after a 10 year up cycle in markets, it is, it is likely that active management in choppy markets will continue to do a bit better. Not only that, but if we are putting together portfolios with with separate accounts at managers, they can do all of those responsible investing screening that the UCF clients expect and demand of us.
Manoti, was there anything you wanted to add?
Sure. Just wanted to piggyback on what Dave said in terms of volatile markets and that having active management is very important, especially in certain asset classes. So small cap, emerging markets, especially you'll see the benefits there. Also, we have ESG integration within the portfolio among all our managers. So the fact that they can integrate ESG as well as have the engagement that Matthew noted earlier is very important within active management. Having their expertise and complementary strategies can really benefit our portfolio during different market environments. And as Dave noted during this choppy environment, we're really seeing the benefits of having active management within the portfolio.
Thank you, Manoti. So I guess at this point, we can, we can turn it back to you, Matt and Stacy.
Yeah. Excellent. So thank you so much for for those thoughtful responses. And thanks to my colleague Stacy for for those questions as well. We are going to turn to some Q and A. I've been monitoring the Q and A. We've got some good questions in here. Doug Smith asks, does UCF have guidance for local churches to link UCF mission investment policies to local mission approaches? We do have guidance and resources available to local churches as it relates to your policies. So I would encourage you to reach out to us so that we can review your current policies and think about ways in which we can link mission to, you know, your investment policy statement or you know, perhaps, you know, just, you know, find general ways to link your values within your policies as a whole. Michael Hutchinson has a question about, about generating dividends and yield, particularly the moderate balance fund. Obviously, with rates being low, dividend, dividend yield in our funds is perhaps a little lower than maybe it would be in a period where our bond coupons are maybe paying us slightly more. I would certainly encourage you and Dave, if you want to chime in on this or Manoti, I would certainly encourage all of our clients to think about, think about total return as it relates to taking distributions from your accounts. You know, clearly our, our, our absolute returns in these accounts have been robust as we reviewed briefly earlier. And so you know, when we think about, you know, generating a yield and generating total return for distributions, we do have some resources and have worked with a lot of churches on ways to to execute distribution strategies from your endowment funds that include taking a look at a total return approach.
I guess the only thing to logically add there is some of the international markets have a higher dividend yield than the, than the US because of the valuation is a little bit more attractive. And then within fixed income, we do have the ability to add strategies with with higher yields to the core, which is a US based treasury and corporate and social and green bond strategy run by a number of good, 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 good managers. And so, but it is, it is a little tough to get yield as you, as you are all well aware.
Yeah, thanks for that. Mel Boynton has a question. Mel, glad, glad that you joined us. And perhaps Matthew, if, if if you could chime in on this one, Mel asks, with inequality growing in the US and globally, is UCF examining investor strategies to champion lowering inequality through minimum corporate tax rates and living minimum wages? Matthew, I don't know if those are two specific topics that, that you'd like to address, but maybe generally how we are looking at lowering inequality globally and the ways that we're positioning our sustainable efforts to do so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great question. And it's not lost on us that, you know, in the midst of a global pandemic and lots of suffering that the wealthy have done quite well and that, you know, the gap has only grown. And so that's, that's something we certainly hold with us in all this work as well as our, our peers. So, you know, yes, we are sending letters with our peers to, you know, senators, to, to other political policy folks in support of not just the, not just the, you know, minimum wage, but also like a federal paid leave policy. And we also use our votes. So the votes that we have, you know, we get to vote on the pay package at every company. And I think last year we voted against about 12% of those pay packages that exorbitantly benefited the executives. And that means less, you know, less money on the table for employees and shareholders. So I would say, yes, all of the above, we are, we are using our voice as best we can. And we're also trying to, as best we can align our efforts with the UCC and and all of the great work that's being done at the Washington DC office. So, so there's, there's some growing collaborations that are happening in terms of public policy.
Sure. Thank you, Matthew. Yeah. Advocating to these corporations to be responsible caretakers of their, of their, of their capital can sometimes be challenging, but ways in which we can direct them, particularly around compensation, as you just mentioned, is a, is one avenue to, to, to help you know, sort of alleviate inequity if possible.
We are all, all aligned here and just I attempted to answer that, you know, in the chat. Our managers are charged with sustainability, looking at the sustainability of organizations and paying a living wage and an adequate wage are part of the ability to attract, attract employees and, and maintain the position in the marketplace because consumers are increasingly demanding that that's the case.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. No, thanks, Dave, for that additional color to our keeping our managers accountable is certainly important. I will, I'm going to limit Dave's answer on this next question because it's a huge question. And he doesn't have the answer to it, I'm pretty sure. Or Manoti, you and he doesn't have the answer to it, I'm pretty sure. Uh, or Manoti, you can jump into, but Carl even wants to know, is the stock market in a bubble?
Real quick, quick answers. I've lived through a lot of bubbles. And, and, uh, you know, while this one feels a, a bit bubbly around the edges, there is a, a real driver, which I indicated before, that earnings are, are, earnings are in good, are in pretty good shape. And that was not the case in some of the prior bubbles. Certainly was not the case in, in, in 99. But technology is leading to productivity. Uh, and, uh, if, if, you know, I, I will limit my answer probably, you know, to, to that, but I, I, I guess what the message should be from UCF is we're on the lookout and on the watch, both from internal staff or investment consultant through, uh, metrics and, and valuations in order to determine whether we, we will enter a bubble stage.
I think, thanks for that, David. And certainly our clients know, as, as we talk to them, that our clients benefit from having an experienced hand at the tiller with, uh, with you and Lon and Manoti, uh, you know, navigating, you know, what can be potentially challenging markets. Not your first rodeo, as you said. So, um, you know, certainly we appreciate that experience. Lastly, and I, Manoti or Dave, either one, uh, Tom Mason asks, um, what are the current and likely future roles of stock buybacks in equity performance? It's a good question. Um, seen, seen a little bit of that and, uh, I don't know with, which one of you would like to answer that, but good question by Tom.
Lost track of the, of the specifics, but, uh, I, I think it's suffice it to say it's going to have less of an impact that it has in, it has in the past for, for, for numerous, numerous reasons. Somewhat, you know, val, valuations, but I would consider it to be less of an impact going forward. That's probably the most succinct way I can answer it at the moment.
Sure. Absolutely. Well, we're nearly to the top of the hour and I certainly want to thank all of our attendees for, for your time and for your trust in our organization. I want to thank my colleagues Stacy Pettis and Matthew Illian. I want to thank Manoti and Dave for being with us from the investment team. And also want to thank Anita Dorat for her time, uh, on the really well-done, uh, interview. Most importantly, I want to thank our, uh, also importantly, excuse me, I want to thank our other staff on the call again. United Church Funds is a small but mighty team, uh, hopefully doing great work on behalf of our clients. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for all they do on behalf of our clients. And again, thank you all for joining us tonight. We really appreciate it. Uh, there will be a recording available to you after this, uh, after, uh, but in the next couple of days, we'll get that out to you. As you have questions or comments, feel free to reach out to us after the webinar and we'll be happy to, uh, to circle back to you with responses. So thanks again and have a wonderful evening.